For the auditor to come back and start the recorder. Okay, calling the meeting to order. On January, no, January, July 9th, bids were opened and they came back a little bit more than expected. Last Friday was the last meeting that I had with our construction manager, DCI, and with our architectural consultant, Shai Hattery. And from there, found out some reasons why the bids were higher. Over the weekend, Megan, our board assistant, got with DA Davidson and found out some wonderful news. So I think I'm gonna first have Shai with DCI, whoever's gonna go first, explain how, what the bids came in and why. And then DA Davidson and Megan can go over what the solution is.
Chris, we've probably both had comments, but Brandon can start.
Whatever you need to do.
Yep, I can talk about just our results and the post-bid analysis we've provided. So there was multiple prime packages bid, as Chris noted on the 9th. A few of those packages, we did not receive bids. Those were directly related to earthwork and utilities. And then we had several other packages. In summary, half were on target and half were not, and they were high. So we went back, researched with the prospective bidders, reasons why. Really come down to two things, market conditions, which could be summed up in lack of resources, material escalations are still high, profit margin increases, and then the start date. The start date was probably the reason for the lack of bids on earthwork and utilities. That market is very saturated right now with work. And the wet spring has really dragged all their commitments late into the summer, and we just couldn't find resources to commit to the schedule. The schedule was produced to make sure we had concrete or foundations completed or most away complete through the winter to save costs, but we just can't find resource to do the excavation work to meet that. So that was the reason for the lack of bids in the two areas. We had bids in all the other packages. Some had multiple bids, two to three, that were over budget. But underneath those bids are several subcontractors where we've identified only single resources to many scopes of work, which is also a reason why we're saying market conditions is definitely contributing to the high bid results for the same reasons I just explained. The other items we've identified, we've been working with Shai Hattery. There's design elements that contributed to some cost increases. We believe those are all solvable items. We can go back, fix some detailing, re-look at some things that were specified into a lower cost point, and there's a bucket of money that's contributed to that amount. So really, those are the two focus areas we've identified. We did talk generally what each bucket we feel like is. That the solvable design elements could be around the tune of $2 million. The market conditions, we cannot fix. I mean, it's an element of rebid on some of those, and the product of time may help some of those, but it may not. Market is the market, and we can analyze that when we know our rebid date, but those things are tough to fix.
Brandon, would you put some numbers, just so people know? I mean, I don't anticipate everyone in the room knows what the bid total came back.
Yeah, so the bid total, and this is, Aaron, I'll qualify this to say that the bid total for the July 9th time includes the two packages we didn't get is the budget amount. So you can actually, you know, so if we, you can't include zero there. So the two budget amounts, the bid day amount was, with a contingency, is $31,770. If you take contingency out, it would be $30,770, right around that amount. And this is just construction bid day value for July 9th. There was a previous Phase 1, the demo package, that is a separate number from those numbers.
I guess people will probably wanna know what the total is then with the demo. So that we have a good...
Well, the total budget also includes all our bonding fees and all of that. So 37.4 is what I come up with as the total.
Total project budget.
And Brandon and I are pretty close, because he doesn't have those bonding fees. So 37.4 would be the number that I would use when you look at the total project cost.
So I guess the comments that I would like to make is there were some very good bid results that we saw on bid day on July 9th. Mechanical, electrical, detention, and security in particular. So we've recognized those in the process and feel that if possible, it would be in the county's best interest to find a way to award those portions of the project. You have 60 days, I believe, to, in a process, to hold those bids. Brandon may have some other comments there, based on discussions that they've had with those bidders. But that is an important factor, in Shai Hattery's opinion, because we'd hate to lose the ability for the county to take those good bids, if possible. On the general construction package portion that Brandon mentioned, which is kind of the area where we saw the most deviation, the higher number. Beginning in January, we did value engineering on the project with DCI and the stakeholders that met regularly. We had four meetings. And in that process, we identified an exterior cladding system for the building that, based on the feedback we received at the time, that was a good direction to take. What we found out on July 9th on the bid day is that, in fact, it took the opposite on us. And we now know why. So in the $2 million that Brandon has identified, we're able to go back and make the adjustments in the documents, because what we were told and what ended up happening were two different things. The cost of that exterior envelope was more expensive. So that's a major factor in that. And Shai Hattery began to present with the user team last Friday kind of the direction on how we would accomplish that. And we're very comfortable that we can make the necessary adjustments. As Brandon indicated, they're accomplishable. So in that respect, just wanted to share how we see that portion of the work. We have the ability, if it's so desired, to make those changes and go back out into the market and consider rebidding that portion of the work right away. But that would require the board to support that. The, I've also put together, and I will hand it out in appropriate, just the history of the timeline for those. I went through and identified the number of meetings that we had, which were 32 meetings, from the time we began the process to work through this with the client, the administrative meeting, since August 1st of last year. So essentially, we've met, on average, once every two weeks to work through this, the client and user group and the stakeholders. And so I would like to think that we will continue to work through this with you to identify the best direction forward.
Mike, on a little slower basis, those 60-day bids that we still have 60-day option on, mechanical and what were the other ones?
Mechanical, electrical, and security, that's our few others, but those are the major ones. And Brandon, would you like to address that?
Yeah, Nick, if you wanna go over what we definitely would recommend.
Sure. We would recommend the roofing package. We would recommend the detention package. The elevator package. The fire sprinkler system package. The mechanical package. And the electrical package.
One more time, detention, roofing?
Elevator.
Elevator.
Fire sprinkler. Then mechanical and electrical.
Nick, do you have an order of magnitude of what those total?
I can quickly... Do I? I'll take the 12 million.
Approximately $12 million in the project for those.
For those particular things.
So the other thing Mike alluded to, we've done some research with these contractors to identify, you know, a start date later than the bid documents show. We're still in the process of that evaluation for all of those bidders, but probably half of those, he said that would be acceptable to them. So we still have, like I said, a few phone calls to confirm with projected bidders here on those packages, but right now, everything's positive on the ones we've got.
Mike, that back on the, I guess I call it exterior bid package. Is there a savings? Is that what you're indicating?
That's the primary package where I anticipate the majority of the $2 million savings were targeted.
What, if you were guessing, that would be how much?
In Shai Hattery's view, it's about $1.5 million in that element of the two.
So that's the exterior of the building, whatever?
The cladding system and the way it's detailed and how that building envelope is built. And for everyone's knowledge, we have the front of the building that has the appearance that everybody's seen in the rendering, and there are materials on the front of the building that are panel systems that go on. On the other side of the building, we are looking at putting that same panel system, so the appearance of the building would be consistent on all sides of the building. What we have today is a brick veneer that's a thin brick, and that thin brick system is the component of the project that drove the cost up. And so we're looking at taking that away and putting the same cladding system that you see on the front.
Any other questions? I'd like to turn it over to DA Davidson and Megan.
So with, which Shai and DCI are talking about is, I spoke with Mark Corry about the kind of the process. We have eight 13-day public hearings in regards to the plans and specs as well as that. You could approve the plans and specs on the sections that are acceptable, reject the plans and specs on the sections that are not acceptable, defer action on those bid awards for the acceptable bids and reject the bids that are not acceptable. You would set a second hearing for the rebid plans and specs and work contract for the whole package at that point, allowing DCI and Shai to rebid out those unacceptable pieces of the project. With that would be, 37.4 is the overall project at this time. Shai and DCI are confident they can bring out $2 million. That would still bring the project to 35.4. We have 29,000 bonds, and I have an estimated interest that is truly just a ballpark. We also had designated at least 1.2 possible of our fund balance to go towards the project. And then in discussions with DA Davidson, you are allowed to do re-offering premiums on your bonds. And Nate believes that he can get those re-offering premiums with the market right now up to as much as 3.7 from the documents you sent. We were talking three maybe on Friday. But over the weekend, Nate sent me some documents that I put before you, up to 3.7 in those re-offering premiums. So you can get your total funding up to 35.1. You could possibly use other fund balances, your case management fund and the sheriff's room and board fund can be used for jail. So there's another 500,000, that gets you to 35.6. So you could fund it, if you take the $2 million off, rebid it. You wouldn't be able to fund it, but you would need to issue re-offering premiums along with your bonds. And I'll let Nate talk about kind of the details of the re-offering premium.
Sure, yeah. Megan told me you had both the, I ran two scenarios. One to just illustrate if the county issued par bonds, which would be the bonds are sold for the face value of the actual bond. So in the first scenario with the par bonds, the borrowed amount would be the amount remaining on the referendum, $20.4 million. All of those bonds are sold at par, so they're sold at 100% of the face value. When you subtract out costs of issuing the bonds as well as re-writing, that gets you to a project fund of about $20,221,000 and change. Alternatively, scenario B shows a situation where we can effectively sell the bonds with a higher coupon rate. The coupon rate is the interest payment that goes to the investor. So the bonds would be sold for higher than the face value that they actually are. So in this scenario, for instance, you look at the June 1, 2028 maturity. In the second column, the principal amount or the face value of the bonds is $905,000 for that particular maturity. So we'd sell them with a 5% coupon, which is higher than what the market would currently demand for an interest rate for that type of a bond. If you go over a couple of columns to the right, there's a column that says yield at 1.79%. So that would be effectively what the market would be demanding for an interest rate for that length of a borrowing. So since the investor is going to be paid a 5% interest rate rather than 1.79%, the next column over is price. They would be asked to pay effectively 122% of the face value of that bond. So all the way over in the right-hand column there, under production, so even though that face value of that bond is $905,000, the investor would pay the county $1,112,000 and change for the bond. So that production column over to the right, if you add up all that production that we're driving by issuing bonds with a higher coupon rate, you can come up with about $3.7 million of original issue premium. Now, if we were to kind of let the market do what it would naturally do, you're probably not gonna issue par bonds. You're probably not gonna issue these, you know, higher original issue premium bonds. The natural tendency is with where the market is right now is gonna be somewhere in between here. Currently, the market is demanding some original issue premium, and that's just an investor preference based on where people think interest rates are going and investors managing their tax risk and having to mark bonds to market for matters of compliance on their end. So you're probably not gonna sell par bonds if you're trying to get the most, you know, economical solution. You're probably not gonna sell these higher original issue premium bonds. It's probably gonna naturally wind up somewhere in the middle. But we can direct the investor to drive more premium into the bonds. Obviously, your debt service levy is gonna be a little bit higher because you have that higher coupon rate. You're effectively borrowing more because of it. One of the benefits of issuing the higher coupon bonds is that if interest rates kind of stay, you know, in the ballpark of where they are now, those 5% coupons, when the bonds are callable in six, seven, eight years, whatever we do, we'd be able to call the bonds and refinance them. So there's potential down the line, there's obviously no guarantee. Rates could go up between now and eight years from now, certainly. There's potential down the road that we could refinance the bonds, and there'd be additional savings down the road.
So it's not a fair, not a fair apples-to-apples to say by issuing a premium coupon, it's gonna cost, it's gonna cost millions more in interest.
Right, yeah.
But it's not exactly fair to say that we're gonna sell anything at par to begin with. So what's your realistic estimate, if we wanted the alternate B, for whatever the market, somewhere between these two, is out? That's gonna run X million dollars of interest payments over the life of the loans. Have you looked at that compared to the premium re-offering, the realistic call? I mean, it's probably gonna get called for around that 5%.
Right.
No one knows, but my guess is that we're probably not gonna be in an interest rate environment where a two-year left on something is not gonna get called, but it's callable.
Right.
What the increase, realistic increase would be to do with alternate B? Do you have a ballpark figure?
You're saying if we were to refinance the bonds down the road? I didn't run that scenario, because like you said, there's a ton of variables. It'd be really hypothetical.
So let's say that we don't refinance them, but we want something in between. What's your estimate of the maturity of the lack of the bonds of an increase in interest payments?
Yeah, I would say, I mean...
1.5, 2?
Yeah, yeah.
Over 20?
Probably.
What's the 1.5, 2?
Additional premium that you'd be selling to, that's just kind of where the market would diverge to get the most economical financing. In its natural state, yeah.
I'm just thinking, because I'm gonna foresee that one of the options that we're gonna be pitching would be to go to the voters with an additional bond right there for the shortfall. And so I sort of wanna know what that would look like if we're pitching another $4 or $5 million additional financing at market rates versus if we went with premium financing. With re-offering premiums, what would that difference look like to pick up the extra 4 or whatever?
Yeah, and the tricky part with that is, I mean, there's the obvious scenario where you hold an additional referendum in November, say even...
It comes down, sure.
And you say rates go up another 50 basis points between now and after the referendum. I mean, you could easily wash that out or have more costs just from rates naturally going up over the course of the next year, if you were to wait. So it's kind of a crapshoot. You could obviously wind up gaining authority in issuing the bonds, and rates might not go up, and you might gain a little bit of efficiency that way, but there's also a risk of having rates go up. And I can't speak to what, you know, construction inflation is and the risk that, you know, you might, if you were to rebid it further down the road after a referendum, you might get some inflation on the construction costs, too.
Yeah, it historically doesn't go down.
Yeah.
Somewhere, I got this this morning, was there 7 million additional costs?
That's the difference between the interest on these, Nate?
Yeah, that's the difference in the interest. I mean, you gotta account for the net, the original issue premium that you're getting on scenario B. So that 3.7 million, if you subtract that out, I mean, it's closer to about 3 million. And that's over the life of 20 years, you're pretty close on interest costs.
Also running a scenario where the bonds aren't called in a 5% coupon, at least historically, for the least I think it would be called when a grant teacher's trip. And considering that all of these bonds are sold at par, which...
Which is unlikely, yeah.
So it's sort of difficult to just say it's 3.5 million. That's why I was asking the question, and he thought it was somewhere around 1.5, 2.
Yeah.
We do have the ability, if we told 84 cents, that's not an issue.
Are you talking about the levy?
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you flip that page over, I ran the levy analysis, and the estimated tax levy increase by doing the original issue premium bonds would be about 15 cents per $1,000 valuation. So on a $100,000 home, with the par bond scenario, you'd be looking at about a $27 annual tax increase. With the original issue premium bonds, you're looking at about a $34.55 increase.
So run it by me quickly, where do I find the 15 cents?
Would be the estimated tax levy increase, third column from the right. So on scenario A, it's 50.88 cents. And on scenario B, it's 65.29 cents. And that's an estimate.
And then where's the 27 cents? The $27?
27, no, so that gray bar, or sorry, that green bar that goes across the middle.
We don't have green.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. So there should be a darker bar.
Okay, that's the one.
The far left column is the assessed valuation. So we're looking at the residential, the top table residential property. That's a $100,000 assessed valuation home. If you follow that across to the right, second column from the right, is $26.92.
For some reason, mine shows 34.55.
That'd be scenario B, yeah.
That's scenario B.
So that's the original issue premiums.
Some other page.
Yep, there you go.
Okay.
Yep, so we're looking at the two different scenarios. The other sheet should say $26.92.
Got it.
So you're looking at about, what is that, $8 annually difference on the tax levy?
Okay, well, this meeting was about options, and to look at all of them. So DCI, do you have any other options other than accepting the bids that we have?
And... I think the, maybe to summarize, Chris, it's really, it's two options, and maybe option one has a game. So option one is to do as we said. You would award the bids that we, Nick, explained earlier, and we would rebid the other packages. And we would do that within our 60-day bid window to hold the bids that are acceptable. I think option, I'll call it 1B to that, because that timeline is very aggressive, is we need to continue to research our bidders, and if they're willing to hold beyond that, there is a mechanism to do that. We'd wanna make sure we double-check with Mark, but that mechanism would then allow slightly more time to give basically our $2 million redesign and out to bid. It would also, in our opinion, especially with this early package, we would push that to a more acceptable timeline for bidders, thus increasing the confidence in our $2 million we're saying to come off. No, they're really the same option. As far as you'd still hold the bidders we have, we'd still rebid the bidders that are not favorable. Option two, then, would be for the county to reject everything at this point and then really go to a redesign element and rebid all those packages. And that could mean a whole host of other, you know, what that program is, Chris. So I can't answer, but that would be your option. Got anything, Mike, that I missed that you might mean that those are really...
No, I think that's essentially where we're at.
Well, for both, for both Shai and DCI, how confident are you, if we looked at what you called 1B, maybe the timeline gets extended so that some of those are unfavorable? How confident are you in the $2 million? Because I'm not, I'm not here to cast blame upon anyone, but if you wanted to gauge where I'm at on the spectrum of how confident I am based on the bid numbers being 18 to 20% higher on what we saw, I don't have a ton of confidence at this point. So what sort of assurances are there that $2 million is really $2 million and not $700,000 in additional problems where we're right back to square one?
Yeah, so we've built a list, Aaron, to get to that amount. It's actually a little higher than that amount. But 1B probably provides a better timeline to increase that confidence, like I said. Just 'cause within 60 days, it's a tight window to redesign. Make sure we've vetted the details and we're seeing the costs that we've identified them all, so...
Do you think that'll also assist with the earthwork and dirt part that we don't have bids on?
Yes, because now we're in a timeline, it was aggressive to start with. I mean, we were starting to a point where we needed excavation to do ground improvement foundations before the actual foundations. Even with this 60-day window, now we're pushing into a timeline that's really not that favorable to even match what the original goals were. that favorable to even match what the original goals were. So you'd probably push to a spring start to get more, you know, increased results, is our opinion. I can't predict, Aaron, exactly what those bid results would be compared to our budget right now, but in our opinion, it's more backlog scheduling work than we're trying to get something in when people don't have the ability to do the work.
I agree with what Brandon's saying, Aaron, just to be here, our thoughts as well. I'm very confident in our ability to make this adjustment. The reality is we had single bidders in certain areas, and because of those single bidders, we're removing that complexity from the project and creating the ability to have multiple bidders, so that's going to help.
Another question from the board. All right. Do you have enough information to come up with a decision by next Tuesday or the 13th? If not, let's compile a list of questions now.
I guess it wouldn't hurt my feelings to see sort of the proposed 2 million savings number as opposed to just hearing it.
Yep.
I mean, I heard that 1.5 from the exterior on, I wouldn't mind seeing what that actually looks like.
The makeup of that.
And whatever other mechanisms where we can save costs, because the less that we have to do premium financing or reoffering.
Yep.
That's all I have.
All right, I'm going to ask you or motion to adjourn.
So much.
Second.
Show, you cook?
Hi.
Back to the chart?
Hi.
Thank you.